I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the US, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there, let's come up and see you shoot.
That's my guy. Alright, let's, uh, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second it.
Seconded by Hank. Uh, any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have resident comments and questions for anything not on the agenda. Mr. Unmok, do you want to come on up? Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Dave Unmok and Luke Fisher with the League of Minnesota Cities.
I haven't said anything yet.
Oh, no, it's just, just who you are.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. So, uh, mayor, mayor's member, the council members of the audience, staff and people here. My name is Dave Unmok, I'm the executive director of the League of Minnesota Cities. This is Luke Fisher, who's the deputy director. We are here to, uh, say thank you to, uh, to Mike and Cindy and congratulate you on a great career, but also here to recognize and say a few words about our colleague Brent, who, uh, is on our board. So if you just give us a, a couple of seconds, we appreciate it. The timing was perfect, we wanted to come this evening, uh, for a brief few minutes at your recognition, but also come to, uh, the council meeting here as you close your career as elected officials. We've watched your career, we've, we've studied what you've done. I was lucky enough, as you may know, to be part of it a little bit, but my first time in Carver dates actually a little bit before even yours, I think. When I was the city administrator in Belle Plaine in the early 1980s, both Belle Plaine and the city of Carver weren't the same as they are today. And, uh, it was this little small town, and so it was-
I was 12.
Carver, yeah, right.
Wasn't 12?
I was 12.
I agree with the mayor.
Why do you look at her?
Well, she's your conscience. And your truth. But, long story short, is then when I worked for a, a firm for a few years before I took this job, I had a chance to do at, uh, three strategic planning sessions with your city, and I got to know the group here, I got to know other elected officials that were on the, on the city council, and I got to know Brent, uh, as well, and it was an extremely great experience. So, part of, part of what I did when I moved over to the League of Minnesota Cities was to keep the city of Carver in my mind and, and to follow you and track you, and of course, we have, there's just a lot going on here. Uh, and I want to congratulate you on a wonderful term, and you Cindy and Courtney, congratulations on, uh, your, your incoming, uh, mayoral race. We're here to extend our best and support on behalf of the league. And then if I may, uh, thank you, and thank you to you, to the staff and the community of this city, for allowing Brent Merrick to be part of our board. He is, uh, a recognized leader on our board, he's thoughtful, he's considerate, he's deliberate, he asks good questions, he's serious, but he also can enjoy himself, and he's just made a big difference. And you can't be on the board of directors without the support of your community and with your city council, and so we want to thank you for allowing him to work with us. He's a, a great man, and, and we know he's doing a good job here with, uh, the city hall and all kinds of development and so forth, and so we're really proud to call him a colleague and a friend. So, not only congratulate you on your service, congratulate to the future council, and best of luck to this community, but also thank you for letting Brent Merrick be part of the league board.
Well, we greatly appreciate everything that you guys have done. You've taken a league that, uh, as I just was mentioning in back, but not publicly was, um, the league was a good organization, and you guys have taken it, making it a great one. I think one of the biggest, best things you did was have Brent be on your board. Um, you and I talked about it, um, prior to you, and putting the invitation forward, and I have said to you many times that maybe the best administrator in the state, and he's made you guys look good, um, but you guys do a great job in helping us to look good as well, so thank you for that as well, and thank you for being here.
If I wouldn't mind, Luke has just a thought on conferences and stuff that you may be interested, it'll take just a second.
Absolutely, you guys might be interested in this.
Great, thank you very much, mayor and council, congratulations, Mike.
I'm not interested at all.
I'm not, I don't care.
Yeah, you get a pass as well, but congratulations, Mike and Cindy, on very successful council careers. Uh, as you probably know, Brent is a friend of mine, and he's always spoken very highly of both of you and this whole council, um, so it's an honor to be here tonight. Um, just, uh, a, a quick thought about, uh, training and an opportunity to connect with the league, um, as you are prepared, uh, to welcome a new council member. And as experienced officials, we have leadership training coming up, and I wanted to let you know about them. Uh, two opportunities, we have an opportunity on January 25th and 26th in Mankato, and an opportunity on February 1st and 2nd in Plymouth. And we'd like to invite you to come and connect, um, with other council members, uh, other mayors, uh, to the mayor-elect, uh, and, and network, learn a little bit more. Um, for experienced officials, we're offering some training, uh, skill-based training on communications, and, uh, we hope that you'd, you'd consider joining us.
And I think, uh, in fairness, it's one of the best times to network and get to know other people, and Brent and I have gone to a lot of, a lot of the league, uh, functions, as well as metro cities, and you walk in and you know everybody after a couple of years, and everybody knows, and it's, it's actually a really good time, and I talk about best practices and who to contact. You're never alone in all this, so you guys are great, and thank you for that. Thanks for stopping by, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Uh, we are now on, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's getting warmed up in our clapping, huh?
Yeah, warmed up. Um, we are now on to, uh, Public Service Recognition 5.1, Councilmember Cindy Monroe.
Alright, so I am gonna, um, start this off, so we're here tonight to recognize Cindy.
I don't get to?
An amazing career, no.
Oh.
You can, you can have a second. Kind of paused. Do you want to go ahead?
No, no.
Great. So, um, when Cindy was first elected to city council, population of Carver was 744 people. That was 1993. She served on city council from 1993 to 1996. She was appointed mayor from 97 to 98, and then elected as Carver's first female mayor, and served a two-year term from 99 to 2000. She was then on city council-
Girl power.
From 2003 until 2008. So that's a total of 24 years, which ma- now makes her the longest-serving member of the Carver City Council.
Not continuous.
Cindy, I have always appreciated your way of explaining really complex things when I wasn't understanding it any other way. You were always patient and kind, um, you were the liaison to the park board, back when it was the park board and I was a member, then you became the liaison to the planning commission when I was on the planning commission, um, and your let-them-figure-it-out kind of hands-off style of management, but always willingness to be able to be part of the process if there was any question, um, and there when you were needed, I really respect and appreciate. Um, you're also really good about sharing our monitor.
Yes, I am.
Is there anyone else who would-
It's my, it's my monitor.
Um, Cindy, I just want to say thank you for, one, for everything you've done for this community. Um, I consider you a friend, I've known you for a long time, I've known your family for a long time. Um, I'm going to very much miss your face every time I look left here. Um, I appreciate how much you have, how much you have, um, have mentored, um, mentored us as we come on as new council members, and I appreciate your always calm and analytical way of, of looking at all the issues and, and the issues that you've had to, to go through for 24 years. So, um, I'll make it short, but I just want to say thank you, Cindy.
Cindy, read your packet.
What did you say? I always read my packet.
I know that, that was kind of the words of warning that were spread before my first meeting was, "Make sure you read your packet every time." And I have, thank you. You done? For now.
Cindy! Yes, Michael.
I love you. 24 years. I'm not gonna get mushy on you, 'cause I might cry then, but I love you.
So, we have a little something for you, but before we do that, um, we have a House resolution here in your honor honoring, um, councilmember Cindy Monroe on the occasion of her retirement. Um, whereas those who give selfishly, who selfishly give of their time- selflessly, sorry. Selflessly give of their time and energy to benefit and better their community, whereas public servants holding elected office are deserving of special legislative recognition. And whereas Cindy received her BA in political science from St. Olaf College, has resided in Carver since August of 1990, and has served as a member of the Carver City Council for the last 24 years, and whereas, in addition to her service on the city council from 1993 to 1996 and 2003 to 2018-
Not continuous.
Cindy was elected and served as mayor from 1997 to 2000. Cindy's other acts of community service include membership in the Carver Lions Club and board membership in the Carver County Community Development Agency, and Cindy has held positions as Carver County Planning Commissioner and the Carver Heritage Preservation Commissioner. And whereas Cindy also served as an East Union Elementary School Site Council Volunteer and coached fast pitch softball for the Carver County Youth Baseball and Softball Association for several years while her daughters were involved in the sport, and whereas December marks the end of Cindy's decades of service to the city of Carver City Council, and she, as she did not seek reelection. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration of the House of Representatives of the State of Minnesota, that it thanks and commends councilmember Cindy Monroe for her many years of outstanding leadership and service to the community, and extends best wishes for her for the future. Um, it's signed Kurt Doutt and Jim Nash.
You know, when you read it like that, it really does sound like a lot of crap. I mean, I did a lot of stuff.
They had political science courses?
Language.
Do you want to say?
All I would like to say is, the very first thing I'd like to say is, um, I want to thank all the residents of Carver who made it possible for me to be here for 24 years. Um, I have truly enjoyed this job most of the time. I want to thank my family for putting up with all those Monday nights I wasn't there. It's a good thing I wasn't the cook. And I have enjoyed this, and I, and I feel honored that I was allowed to do this. And, um, I would just like to say to people out there who think about their community and think they could be doing something, do it. I mean, it's easy to learn. Look at, we're sitting up here, we do it. And I just, I just want to say thank you, especially to our staff, who has grown, obviously, over the years, and I think they're an excellent group of people. And I've really enjoyed this, and just, thanks very much, and thanks for the recognition.
We have a little something for you.
Oh, we do, we do. Look, a piece of wood.
Yes, as, as you know, the council, uh, named, uh, sent us a great, great Monroe Drive from last of, coming on November 11th, so we have here a- honorary Monroe Drive signed. Congratulations.
It's actually way better.
Thank you.
Really, very much.
Is this working?
You did?
Is this working?
Work!
Hello, hello?
Good job on the front.
And I'm not sure how to do this, but, um, Public Service Recognition for Mayor Mike Webb. Well, let me, let me-
Do you mind if I start with this one?
Let me start. Mike, you're really great.
Wait, wait, wait! If anybody has a clicky pen, feel free. Liam.
Don't eye roll. Ah, boy. Outstanding. Outstanding.
Alright. Um, so when Mike was first elected in 1999, Carver's population was 1,266. Michael served on the council from 99 to 2014.
Continuous.
Continuously. Continuously. I think I just rolled my eyes. And then as mayor for the past four years, from 2015 into, until 2018. If you know Mike as we know him, his saying "It takes courage to lead" is what he has built definitely the last four years and probably the last 20 years around. His passion for the city of Carver is evident. And I've really enjoyed working with you for the past two years and longer before that, even though you don't share the monitor as well as my friend Cindy.
It's my monitor.
Is anybody else?
Yes. I won't say much because Mike didn't, said he didn't want me to, but-
I'll cry.
I am so incredibly proud of Mike Webb. Your leadership has grown by leaps and bounds since you got on the council. Your leadership skills. And, um, you have been great for Carver.
Thank you.
And I respect you, and I, I like you so much as a friend as well. And congratulations on being, serving for 20 straight years.
Straight years. Bringing it.
Yeah.
She swore. In my ear.
Oh, Mike, where do we start?
Oh, Mark. Are we gonna hug?
Oh, I probably should have gone after Mark.
So-
Hold on.
Yeah. That's what I have to say. So, um-
Is that gum?
I don't chew, I don't chop on my gum, sorry, but I do this. Mike, I would like to say, uh, you know, we don't tend to agree on a lot of things here up on the council, but what I do appreciate is the fact that when that meeting's over, we let it go, and I see you at the coffee shop, and it's hellos, and it's wonderful, and I- and sometimes he even buys me a coffee. Um, I do want to say thank you, Mike, for always reminding us to think big. It's easy to get caught in the weeds up here, and you are great at reminding us to think, think big and take a look at the whole picture, so I want to say thank you for that. And I have enjoyed our banter as much as, as much as we can, right, Mike?
I'm not hugging you.
Hank, you already talked.
Well- Yeah, Hank already talked. Yeah, I did. But, um, your leadership on this council is, um, it's been, it's very valuable, and it will be missed, and we all have shoes that we have to fill, uh, we will step up. One shoes I'm not gonna fill all the time are the ones that are up at 30,000 feet. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if anybody noticed this, but when every talk to Mike about planning or anything, he's up at 30,000 feet, so I'm like, "Come back down, come on down, we're down here." But, that's given me a whole new perspective as to how to view Carver 30 years out. And it's, it's all, it's a very interesting perspective that, um, that I'll look at from now on. Your leadership and your friendship has been amazing, and after as many canoe trips as I've been in, in the Boundary Waters with and without you, he's the only person to ever swamp me. I swamped him. Not on purpose either. I was actually trying to save his life. Dump, I dumped him. Right to the bottom. Thank you. Well, you guys, thank you all, um, I actually echo- Echo. That's my corporate. Um, Cindy, you know what, it, it really boils down to the community that we live in, and the people that get involved, you guys are as involved as anybody, um, probably more so. So you see all these firefighters here, to get awards and do the things that the actual community. Our job is actually quite easy. Brent and I were talking, uh, last week, and what we've done here is really provide an opportunity for these people to succeed. Um, I don't call them staff, I've always called them partners, but we have probably the best group of people working in this city. And not for us, but if you take a look at the partners that we do have, we sit up here and we kind of make decisions at times, but it really boils down to what you guys all bring to us, and it's been an absolute pleasure working here. My wife has not made any sacrifices at all, comparatively speaking to me, um, because she travels a lot, so this actually, now I'm not gonna have anything to do on Monday nights, 'cause she'll be gone. Um, so, um, Tom Ryan's been a friend of mine for a long time, and almost never invites me over for dinner when my wife travels. So, our house is up for sale, um, but until it sells, I need somebody to feed me while my wife is gone.
Hey, do you want to come over the next council meeting, and we'll eat dinner and watch it, watch council meeting?
We are streaming it, and is there a live text-in? Larry?
Larry?
No.
Cool, but thank everybody for everything, you guys, this has been an absolute pleasure. Um, this is a great council, we're in great hands, as long as Brent is around, um, he's- he's, Brent's that good, um, and he runs these people. These people can all control us, and that's the way it should be, so, thank you all. Oh, yeah, read.
So, just real quick, we have a six-paragraph House resolution honoring Carver Mayor Mike Webb on the occasion of his retirement as mayor. Whereas those who selflessly give of their time and energy to benefit the better of their, betterment of their community and serve as public servants, holding elected office, are deserving of special legislative recognition. And whereas Carver is located on the Minnesota River, and its old, and its old town was among the first districts in Minnesota on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas Mike Webb, a Duluth native who attended the University of Minnesota Duluth, has resided in Carver with his wife Mickey for over 20 years, and whereas Mike has served on the Carver City Council for 20, it says consecutive, years, from 1999 to 2014, as a council member, and from 2015 to 2018 as mayor. And whereas, Mike Webb has also served his community as manager of the Carver Black Sox baseball team, as a board liaison for Southwest Transit-
We were 2 and 24.
On the board for St. Francis Hospital, and as a frequent contributor to and leader of community events, celebrations, and charitable groups. And whereas, while the city of Carver prepares for a new city hall and community gathering space, Mike and his family prepare for a new home in Arizona in retirement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration of the House of Representatives of the State of Minnesota, that it thanks and commends Carver Mayor Mike Webb for his many years of outstanding leadership and service to the community, and extends its best wishes for him for the future. And this one too is signed by Kurt Doutt and Jim Nash.
Thank you.
And we have a little something for you as well.
Outstanding. That just hurts.
Okay, how about if we recognize like some other people?
Yes! Gilly, Gilly!
Gilly, Gilly!
Alright, we are now moving on to 5.2, and thank you guys for your patience through all that. Um, 20 years, been a good run, and it's good to know Cindy Monroe.
Thanks.
Gilly, Gilly!
By the way, I'm sticking around, I'm not moving.
Consecutively? You know, we don't sell our house, neither are we. Gilly, Gilly! Get up. So, I don't have a microphone, so I'm just, can you hear me? Hello, 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 can you hear that?
Yes.
Alright, so what we really wanted to do is be able to have this on tape so you can take a spy on it, but I'm not gonna sit up here and talk to you, I'm gonna talk to you down there. So, we're hoping that this, this picks up on everything. You cool with that? Are you nervous? Actually, why don't you come up here and sit?
He's scared.
Yeah, come on up.
You can have my seat.
Come on up, Gilly. Yeah, this is awesome. Come on up, Gilly, Gilly. Now I have a microphone. So, I see your kids out there.
Yes.
I see your lovely wife out there. Hey, did you want to, what did you want to tell your mom? It's just that my eyes are up here. Gilly, Gilly! Everybody in this room knows Gilly, Gilly. Um, we have nominated and voted for Ryan Gill to be one of our Employees of the Year. Goody Two Shoes, you're not out of this. You might have to come up here, now you're getting nervous, aren't you? So, Ryan Gill, um, I've known Ryan for a while now, and I've known him personally, longer than I've known him professionally, even though he's been a firefighter. If you guys watch, there's, there's two things that this fire department has done. And they've come together in a, a way that, um, I haven't seen in a long time with a lot of people, between chief, Cali, and what Ryan Gill has done. It's the first time that somebody put in for a raise on the fire department that I did not oppose. Yeah. So, we normally, what we've always paid our fire marshal, I believe, was 1,500 bucks, something like that. Um, with the job that Gilly, Gilly has done, um, we bumped that up into officer-type material, and I think you get five grand now, 2,500, five grand, five grand. And I did not, and Cali knows, chief knows, um, I'm usually kind of a stickler when it comes to, "You guys make more money than I do." And we finally have one that deserves it. Um, no, come on, come on! Come on, you guys! Um, Gilly, Gilly has done some amazing things. He's been a dedicated member of the fire department. Um, he's the chair of the Officer Review Board, they manage all the officer applications and employment process. Um, he's taken on additional coursework and training for the position of fire marshal, and taken that position to new levels. Um, in a year of unprecedented growth as fire marshal, reviewed 100 development processes. And to have that skill set and actual technical knowledge is second to none, and you guys all know that. Um, one of the things that I have great respect for Mr. OCD, um, you guys laugh, 'cause you know, this guy, is this, is this just killing you right now? It's just- There you go. Yeah. That's just gonna bug him to death. Our family, Tom Ryan and, uh, his wife Stacy, who is family to all of us, um, put together a fundraiser last year, and between the fire department and all you guys in who and what you are, um, this gentleman took this to new levels like I've never seen. Raised forty grand for the Ryan benefit, and it was ninety-eight point six percent Ryan Gill, with what he did in terms of organization, um, caring, and putting together what he put together was unlike anything I've ever seen, and couldn't be more proud of him. So with that, before I start balling, along with, um, your lovely wife is totally looking right at us. I'd like to present Ryan Gill with our Employee of the Year plaque in appreciation of your commitment to quality and demonstration of staff values as recognized by the Carver City Council and City of Carver employees and the City of Carver. We're gonna go down and take a picture, but I want one with just you. Take one with just me and Gilly, Gilly. You, you hold the whole rest of it, you hold it like it's yours. It's yours. Oh my gosh. Oh yeah? Tony hugged me earlier. Tony hugged me earlier. All right, let's get you down in front. Oh yeah, yeah! Spitz! Hey, you want one of your, you want one of your... You want, yeah, get the fan up here, come on up! Nothing better, come on up! Come on up, boys! Hey, get your flag up! Gilly, Gilly! Gilly, Gilly!
Thank you.
Did I even bother sitting up here?
No.
Yeah, I'll leave.
Yeah, Courtney, get out of here. Those of you that know me know I usually have some kind of nickname for people. When Brenda Good walked in the office, um, probably second or third day, um, I was like, Brenda Good, Brenda, Brenda, Brenda Be Good, like Brenda, Brenda Goody Two Shoes, Dos Shooter's Arinos, so I call her Dos Shooter's Arinos now. Brenda Good, please come up here. Didn't think you'd have to do that. So Brenda Good is our, um, Administrative Assistant in the Administration Department, and get up here, come on up, girl! When we talk about, when we talk about, um, thought process and what goes into putting together a good department, um, Brent is a brilliant man. I had nothing to do with this, and our council had nothing to do with this, so I'd love to tell you that I hired her, but I didn't, but I would. When I first met Brenda, I thought, okay, this is gonna work out really well, and talk about fitting into a culture that is exactly what we've been trying to put together for a long, long time, and I think we've succeeded, and I think Brenda is the part that kind of proves that we have. Brenda comes with a smile every single day, Brenda is supportive of everybody in our office, I've never heard Brenda Good complain, not during the election season when she was putting in eighteen-hour days, um, and she's always asked what she can do to help other people rather than what she needs. I, I couldn't be happier about this, when Brent told me who was chosen, I actually kinda, I think I squealed a little bit, manly though, and, uh, thought this is absolutely perfect, and I, I can't be more happy that you're on board. Where'd my note go? I have a note. Here it is, I got it. Brent put it together for me, 'cause that's what he does. So, um, I think one of the best summations of Brenda is what the nominating employee, um, put together for Brenda. Says she has a great attitude and always accepts whatever task openly and willingly. She is always cordial and polite with all her coworkers and residents. She represents the city of Carver with a kind and caring approach, and that totally sums up Brenda Good. And I can't tell you how many times, I walk into City Hall probably three or four times a week, and Brenda has an office in the back, um, and wow, can she hit a keyboard! Am I right? She can hit a keyboard, but you always, and she's busy 'cause the keyboard is going. But you know what, the next day I come in, she's up front covering for somebody that's going on lunch break, um, or she's up front helping somebody at the front desk, um, as a customer coming in, which we call all of our residents customers. Couldn't be happier, I couldn't be more proud to introduce to you Brenda Good, in appreciation of your commitment to quality and demonstration of staff values as recognized by the Carver City Council and City of Carver employees. And her lovely husband Darren. Would you like to say anything? Okay.
Thank you.
Let's you and I take a picture, I want, just with, you put your, this is yours. I'm putting my arm around you, I don't care. You can't sue me, I'm done. Darren, get up here. Oh, I need to have one more. All right, are you guys sick of me talking yet? Were you guys? I heard that.
Caroline Monroe, be quiet. Please be quiet.
So those of you that know me, back to me. Been a long and storied relationship with the fire department, and I know that, um, you guys will understand when I say I couldn't be more proud of this fire department. And as our Community Service Award, um, our fire relief has taken, I personally believe has taken our fire department leaps and bounds and taken it to a place that it's never been. The courage that I saw in the room, uh, a couple weeks ago, um, was unlike anything I've ever seen from you guys, and Brent and I talked about it afterwards, and I think I said it to a number of you guys, um, whether it matters, um, couldn't be more proud of you guys for the maturity and the depth of what you guys brought to the table that night. And, um, that was part of what went into this, but you'd already won the award at that time. But what we're giving you this award for is your annual open house event. You guys, how many, when I first got to town, that was, first off, it didn't, it wasn't there. When you first started it, I think a hundred people showed up, and how many hot dogs and chili did you serve last time? Three thousand, it seems? There's about nine hundred people at the last one? I mean, you guys are amazing on that. You guys have volunteer personnel for nearly every community event in Carver, Soggy Bottom, Steamboat Days, Trunk or Treat, Carver Village, Christmas, just keep naming them, you're always there, and it's the same group of people. You guys lead fire prevention talks with Carver, I wanna go and sit in on one of those sometimes, uh, fire prevention talks with Carver Elementary and East Union Elementary, and the bike rodeo. You guys have just taken this entire town by storm over the last probably five to eight years, and I know it doesn't mean that much when we say that we're proud of you, but you guys represent this community in a way that is unlike anything. We do some cool stuff up here, compares nill to what you guys do, and so as a group, I want you guys to come up and accept the Community Service Award for the Carver Fire Relief Association in recognition of the time, support, and service that has been shared to truly make a difference in the city of Carver, December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Fourteen, for letting me know that!
Take care, guys. Brenda, thank you. What'd you guys do to me?
Thank you, Caroline.
Started a discussion.
Bye, Caroline.
I think I did that. All right. Apparently we have a meeting to do. All the feel-good stuff. Larry? Larry, I'm gonna miss you, man. Can we go to court? All right, we now have a public hearing, six point one, the Commerce Drive Improvement. Dan, I think I need you to, uh, present some slides.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Okay, on volume here?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'm just gonna talk through the Lakeview Industries Infrastructure Improvement Project, otherwise known as Commerce Drive. So I'll try and go quickly here, uh, so what we're gonna be talking about is the general project timeline, key milestones, project summary, project financing, some next steps, and, uh, certainly open for any questions along the way. To date, we've completed the following items, we've authorized the preliminary project work, uh, topographic survey, feasibility study, and, uh, we've called for the public hearing. Uh, where we are tonight is, uh, conducting the public hearing, uh, proving the feasibility study if you so choose, and of course authorizing final, uh, design and plans and specifications, again, if you so choose. Uh, received plans and specs are upcoming steps, uh, open bids, contract award, construct the, the project, of course, would be this summer, May to, May to September, and, uh, close out the project are the final steps to this, this process. Uh, project summary is roadway construction to serve Lakeview Industries, and of course municipal utility, uh, uh, construction for water main and sanitary sewer. Now, of course, the project is there to, uh, uh, serve Lakeview Industries here, so I'm sorry if I'm not keeping up, I'm going off my notes here. So we are, we're right here, so what we are...
You're fast!
Yeah, I'll, I'll get through this quick. So we are, we're looking at, uh, right turn lane on Levi Griffith Road, uh, Commerce Drive is gonna be a forty-foot, uh, roadway width, we've talked a lot about roadway widths here, that's two through lanes and a center-left turn lane, uh, commercial street section, obviously it's a heavy-duty section for the, the commercial, uh, commercial uses here, curb and gutter, total roadway cost is, uh, looking to be around a million dollars. Sanitary sewer improvements would include a ten-inch sewer main, uh, provides maximum depth available for future flexibility for future services in the area. Service stubs, of course, are for, uh, Lakeview Industries and, and the other services beyond to the north. Total estimated project cost at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Twelve-inch water main would be constructed here, provide some flexibility for, uh, future extension to the north as well as for looping, uh, for fire protection, uh, for the site, and, uh, some service stubs for, uh, future development. Uh, overall, the project cost is about two hundred thousand dollars for the water main to serve Lakeview and for, uh, future, future development. So storm sewer, of course, with the curb and gutter section, uh, would come, uh, a storm sewer that's, uh, gonna be utilizing, uh, ponding from Lakeview Industries, and, uh, basically gonna be, uh, conveyed through the existing network that's gonna be built with the development. Total project, uh, cost for storm sewer is around a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
This is expensive.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, overall, the, the project comes together at, uh, around two million dollars, uh, just under two. Uh, the, uh, project is being financed through, uh, deed, which is, you know, about half the project here is fifty percent split, and then, uh, half of it is gonna be split through, uh, TIF, uh, TIF financing. So it's, it's, uh, well set up to be fully financed and, uh, very, very successful deed application effort, so that's, uh, that's, uh, good news, is it fully covered. So, next steps on the project is conduct a improvement hearing, accept feasibility study, and order the improvements, again, uh, with, uh, four-fifths vote. Final design and, uh, plans and spec- specifications would follow. Uh, would be, uh, obviously followed up by accepting the bids, opening bids, and then awarding the project, we're looking at about April, April, uh, possibly March here, if it plays out that way. Constructing the project is the primary timeline that has to be, has to be hit here to align with the Lakeview Industries, uh, site construction, that's the schedule for May to September, with the overall goal is making sure the roadway and all services are ready for, uh, connections and use, uh, when Lakeview Industries is, uh, open and ready for business, so, uh, that would be your final steps here in the, in the process here, and it'd be open for questions or comments about the effort.
Okay, so first off, I need to open the public hearing. We don't need a motion for that, so if there's anybody here, um, those wishing to address the city council should come forward and state your name and address for the record. After all the comments are received, the public hearing will be closed, and no further comments on the issue will be received at this meeting. So, we'll open up the public hearing, does anybody have anything they'd like to, uh, from the public anyway? Bueller? Counsel? Questions? Comments? I'd probably be happy to entertain a motion on, uh, Resolution one seventy-seven eighteen.
Well, should we close the public hearing?
We should probably close the...
I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
Yep, there's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mock. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Uh, motion carries. Public meeting's closed.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution one seven-seven dash eighteen, receiving feasibility report for the Lakeview Industries Infrastructure Improvements Project.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe. I'll second it. Seconded by Hank. Any other comments, questions? Concerns? It's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one seventy-eight dash eighteen, ordering improvement and preparation of plans for the Lakeview Industries Infrastructure Improvements Project.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Well done, damn the man. Quick. Fast! All right, let's, uh, move on, Ms. Smithix. Six point two, street and alley vacations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, tonight you have a second public hearing related to vacation of streets and easement, or streets and alleys. There's another half to this slide. There it is. So, the city of Carver was originally platted in eighteen ninety-seven, and a series of alleys and streets still exist today, so to move forward with development projects where the streets and alleys are existing...
Wait, 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 can you stop for just one second?
Sure.
What was the first sentence?
I don't remember.
Oh, I thought you said...
City of Carver was first platted in eighteen ninety-seven?
Eighteen ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Who was platted before that?
So this is the plat that was recorded.
Okay.
So it's the recorded plat that exists today, so several streets and alleys still exist.
She voted on it!
But not consecutively.
No. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So the streets and alleys to be vacated tonight are related to the Redmond property or Hawthorne Ridge, so the streets and alleys that were platted for the site do not consider the topography, the natural resources, the steep slopes, or development patterns that have occurred in the past one hundred years. So, there is a public hearing related tonight, I'll open it up for questions and comments. I'll open it up for questions and comments.
Alright, so I make, I don't have to make a motion. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Excuse me, wrong tube.
You want some water?
Nope, I got some. That's what made the, that's what hurt. So those wishing to address the city council should come forward, state their name and address for the record. After all comments are received, public hearing will be closed. No further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Are there any public comments? Anybody from the public?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
There's a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Monroe.
Say.
Seconded by Hank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 180-18, vacating streets and alleys as presented in the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Mock. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, moving right along. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by Hank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Merrick, 2019 Improvement Project, project expectations, no action needed. Eight point one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Be a little bit deliberate here, this is a big project for the city, and as a staff, we wanna make sure that we're hitting all the right notes for future expectations of the council. So at the December third meeting, the council held a public hearing on the 2019 Improvement Project. After receiving resident comments, the council took two actions. One, adopting a resolution accepting the feasibility report, and the second, to authorize a city engineer to prepare plans and specifications. The conversation was somewhat complex related to street widths and sidewalk, and so what we've done is we prepared a work plan that hopefully provides the council with a set of expectations for what you should see on the project moving forward. And so I'm gonna run through these six work plan planks, if you will. So one is review existing street widths of adjacent streets and proposed street widths for the project. Confere with the fire marshal and fire chief related to access for emergency vehicles, and provide a best practices analysis related to on-street parking scenarios. So there was quite a bit of conversation related to the proposed street widths that were in the feasibility report. So we're gonna look at the adjacent streets, we're gonna look at parking, and we're gonna talk to the fire marshal and fire chief to make sure that emergency access can be provided. We're going to review configurations for sidewalks within the project area. There's quite a bit of discussion with that. The review will include an assessment of boulevard widths, setback from sidewalk to homes, along with other potential impacts. The third, we're gonna study traffic calming features and strategies for the downtown alley improvement. Number four, we're gonna review, research, and critically assess the financial inputs for the project. So that'll include looking at the feasibility study and the special benefit analysis that we had Patch and Messner do, and look at consistency or inconsistencies, and make sure that we have the right financial inputs for this project. And number five, excuse me, we're gonna prepare an updated project summary for residents within the project area. Review project expectations, share this work plan, and share an anticipated project schedule for residents within the project area. And then finally, we're going to use the data and information that we've collected in the previously mentioned items, and develop plans and specifications for that, for this project. We'll take those to the city council for review at a regular meeting. Prior to that, we're going to review at a work session and give you a sense of the street width, sidewalk issues that we've been contemplating. After we make it through the work session, we'll provide another notice to the residents, giving them basically a summary of the plans and specifications, and then eventually bringing that back to the council for adoption of the plans and specifications and authorizing advertisement of bid. And we're thinking we'll probably, that'll take us through the first part of February. One of the things I really wanted to key in was, based on the results of the special benefit report, additional design analysis related to sidewalks, and street widths aren't likely to reduce the special assessment amount. For example, the street width, or the street assessment using a typical engineering assessment calculation would have an assessment at $18,000, or it's like seventeen or eighteen thousand. When we did the special benefit analysis, that number was pushed down to eight thousand, saying that that property was going to experience eight thousand dollars worth of benefit. And so there's still ten thousand, there's $10,000 of the project cost that the city's paying, and so if you reduce street width by one foot in, or take out a $40,000 sidewalk, that's not gonna close the gap between eight thousand and 10,000. And the city needs to, or in most cases, the city wants to assess what the special benefit report lays out as far as that methodology. And so wanted to share that, but I've had a few emails from residents wanting to talk about that. And so we've been clear from a staff perspective that we see it very unlikely that street width or sidewalks is going to reduce the assessment amount, with the caveat that ultimately that's the decision of the five members of the city council. So Dan Lannis is here as well tonight, as you can see, so we're happy to answer any questions related to the work plan, or if there's items that you want added to this or deleted from it, so we make sure we bring back to you what you're looking for. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for that. Well, that opens up for if anybody wants to see anything on there. I won't be here, the only thing I would ask is that, moving forward, just remembering that the people that live there now aren't gonna be there forever. And as we have new people come into our community, a walkable community, and street widths, everything along with that, I am a massive proponent for sidewalks, and most of the people up here have been the majority of their time, whether it's been on the council or not. And as you move forward, new families coming into that neighborhood, they're gonna be one of the most affordable homes in Carver. You're gonna want sidewalks for people to walk on. I would highly recommend it. Thinking about the next generation of homeowner. Anyone else?
Here we go, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead.
So are we going to be including anything of what the design would look like without the sidewalks?
It'll be, I mean, we can show a figure drawing. When you say "design" as in like just not showing it on the plan?
Right.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question also about sidewalks. I had proposed that we not put sidewalks in, that because of the era when those homes were built, sidewalks weren't kind of the thing they did up there. And actually, there are other places in town that aren't sidewalks. There's no sidewalk on Skyview. Skyview is a much busier street than those streets. But if sidewalks have to be put in, I mean, I think one of the concerns, while money's not gonna be an issue now, because it's gonna stay the same, the assessment whether sidewalks are there or not, but there is a concern about losing yardage, and I'm wondering if sidewalks could be put closer to the street, and maybe there isn't a boulevard. Could the sidewalk be, you know, along the curb? I mean, it's just something to think about. I mean, because it seemed like a number of people were pretty concerned about how much front yardage was gonna get lost.
So part of our analysis will include setback denotations with different boulevard widths, and we'll come back with a recommendation. But we plan on vetting out all these options in some, in a great amount of detail.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just gonna say, just the least intrusive, I'm all for sidewalks, but the least intrusive, if you're walking up Forest Street, sidewalk is on curb all the way up. It's not uncommon, and you go through all downtown, everything is, there's very few boulevards downtown, so. Least intrusive, but I'm all for sidewalks.
You guys, you get to work that out.
Yes, we do.
Alright.
Work it out, you guys.
Yep.
And then you laugh.
No, no action needed. Let's move on to nine point one, 2019 Tax Levy and Budget. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city kicked off the 2019 budget process in May, and continued it through the summer and fall through a series of council work sessions. At the December third meeting, the council held its annual truth and taxation public hearing to solicit comments from the residents. In your packet tonight, there's two resolutions. 175-18 certifies the 2019 property tax levy in the amount of $2,713,263, and Resolution 176-18 adopts the 2019 budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thank you for all the hard work on that. You guys did a phenomenal job. And you made that easy for another year in a row, comparatively speaking, to what it used to be.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 175-18, certifying the 2019 property tax levy.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Hank. Any further comments? Discussion? Again, well done.
Everybody did a great job.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 176-18, approving the 2019 budget.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. Boy, that's, can open that up. Any further discussion? Well done. Now, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Nine point two, 2019 Fee Ordinance. Ms. Sands-Eiden. So I'm gonna miss writing notes on my, making me, making me look a lot smarter than I am.
I'm gonna miss leaving you those notes, too.
Whoa, that's on camera. My wife's, my wife's, my wife's right there, Vicky.
Vicky, you should've wrote some really off-the-wall stuff tonight.
He might've repeated it, you never know, right?
Maybe she did.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, each fall, staff reviews the various fees that are charged by the city, and then recommends changes that are necessary for the following year. The fee schedule that is in your packet for tonight does include the proposed changes that are going to be recommended to go from eighteen to nineteen, and they are noted in red, and then also highlighted in yellow. Notably, the utility rate study was a part of that, and that was, that particular rate study was conducted by Abdo, Ike, and Myers, and it has been incorporated into that proposed fee schedule. If you remember, Steve McDonald did present that to the city council at a work session on June fourth. And then on July sixteenth, the city council accepted the findings and recommendations of that utility rate study. These utility rate study recommended changes have also been communicated to residents in various formats, including the newsletter, a blast on the actual utility bill itself, our website, and social media, Facebook and Twitter as well. In addition, some of the changes that were incorporated had to do with planning and zoning, some name and rate changes to some of the rental facilities, and then some notes for clarification. That particular fee schedule was presented to the city council at a work session on October first, and we did receive some feedback from the city council, and one of those included to add the group classifications to the, for the rental facility, so we did add that to the fee schedule as well. Also, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on fees that are, that related to land use matters, and that was held on October eighteenth. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of that unanimously. I know that sometimes the council asks that question, so I did include that. So if this ordinance is approved this evening, it would be published, and then it would take effect January one of 2019. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, open it up to any questions, if anyone has any.
I just had a quick question with the opening of the new city hall. I assume we're gonna revisit this for rental fees for the specific areas of that building later on next year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash 2018, amending certain fees charged by the city.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Hank. Any further discussion? That I definitely wanna point out a thank you, Vicky. You guys did phenomenal work on that, and it's not easy. Line by line by line. Yeah, that's a very good example of you making our lives very easy, so thank you for that. Any other comments? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Smithix, nine point three. Hawthorne Ridge, you guys been waiting this whole time? Do you guys wanna say, do you guys wanna say anything about Cindy Monroe?
Come on, I dare ya.
Hey, you've been, you guys have all been around this before. We know ya, you can say, this is your chance to say something to Cindy Monroe. Alright, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight we are reviewing land use applications for development of Hawthorne Ridge. So tonight we will be reviewing both rezoning and preliminary plat. The history of how we got here, the Planning Commission originally reviewed the concept plan on June twenty-first, the city council July second. The Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary plat and rezoning, so the two land use applications you are reviewing tonight at their November fifteenth meeting. The final plat dates are to be determined as we continue to work through the preliminary plat phase with the developer and city staff. So some context of where the project is located. The project is proposed by D.R. Horton, and it is the development of the Ellen Redman Farm, which is essentially the center of Carver, so just off Broadway. The driveway is off what is affectionately known as Snake Trail, so a little bit of context of where the property is. As part of the project's approval, a comprehensive plan amendment was also required. So the Planning Commission and city council both reviewed and approved the comprehensive plan amendment, which was forwarded to the Met Council, who additionally did their review. So for the 2030 comprehensive plan, it was guided for a mix of medium and low density. So through the comprehensive plan amendment process, it is drafted as low-density for our 2040 plan. So similar to their project, Meridian Fields, D.R. Horton is projecting to hit the R2 zoning district without the use of a planned residential development. So they will hit what our city code states as the R2 development, which includes the minimum lot area of 7,000 square feet, a minimum lot width of sixty feet, a front yard setback of twenty-five feet, rear yard of twenty, and sides seven point five. So there's some site data also included. Something that's really interesting and to keep in mind about this site is that the total site area is 122 acres, but the non-developable area is about 66 acres. So roughly half the site is encompassed by steep slopes, bluffs, mature trees, things that will be preserved through the development, through the process of this development. Something else to note that we'll get into are the total number of lots. So there's been a slight change in the preliminary plat since you saw it at concept level. So in the northern portion, so these are all northwest, so thinking the top is the location of where the current house exists. One lot has been converted to a tot lot, so I'll get into that in a minute. So one lot has been removed from the northern portion, converted to a tot lot, while the south remains the same. So on the upper portion, fifty-nine lots, without one tot lot, the lower is 21 lots total. So thinking through of how the development will be serviced off city streets, so it will be serviced off Ironwood, Aspen, and Sunny Ridge Drive, two of which are constructed as stub streets. The additional Sunny Ridge is platted, so they will be off existing streets currently today. So something that D.R. Horton has done throughout this process, which has been really fantastic, is they've worked really closely with the neighboring property owners. So they held a neighborhood meeting prior to the Planning Commission meeting to introduce themselves and to meet the neighbors that will be directly impacted by this development. They also met onsite with property owners at the stubs of Ironwood and Aspen Drive to talk about some concerns that were brought up, both through the neighborhood meeting, as well as the public hearing the Planning Commission held for the preliminary plat. So they went out one evening and met with three property owners to discuss some drainage issues that they've been experiencing, to talk through some information, to meet the people that will be impacted by this project. Through that meeting and a closer look at the project, they do believe that some of the drainage issues that are currently existing will be alleviated by this project as development continues. An interesting concept for this project is the trail that will be constructed with the project. So on the left, the red dash line shows the trail that will run through the development. It will run through the backyards of several of the homes, and will connect to the existing driveway. So that was something that was brought up both by the Planning Commission and city council. That would be an interesting design feature, to be able to maintain the driveway as a trail. So that is proposed with the development. It will connect to the greater trail system the city currently has. On the left, there's also a circle around that tot lot that I mentioned. So it will be HOA-owned and maintained, so it will be a private park for that development. The city will not be responsible for development or maintenance. The photo on the right also includes the sidewalks. So you see that this will be a well-connected neighborhood with that unique feature of the existing driveway being converted to a trail. The southern property, the southern portion of the- The southern property, the southern portion of the property that we'll develop additionally includes a sidewalk. So, the project moving forward will have sidewalks throughout and a trail through the northern portion. We've had a few discussions.
Did you say sidewalks throughout?
Throughout the development.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, sidewalks throughout.
So, we've spent a lot of time thinking about the outlets on the property. We were fortunate enough this summer to spend some time with the council members, running around that property, checking it, checking it out, thinking about what it might look like if the city were to own and maintain that property. We're still working through some of the details, but through that due diligence, we did have the League of Minnesota Cities out to discuss liability concerns if we do take that property, knowing that there's a pretty significant trail on the site. There's also cheese caves, which add an element that not many cities have. So, the LMC recommendations included that we clean up a walking or hiking trail to the cheese caves, remove fallen trees. Those of you who spent some time on the property, it was kind of gnarly to get to the cheese caves at times. Close during wet conditions.
So, like floods, they don't want you walking through the creek?
If the cave is accessible, an engineer should review. If the cave is not accessible, we should consider blocking the entrance, provide signage, and consider an ADA trail. So, we're still working through some of these details, what it might look like, but by the time of final plat, we'll have a good idea of the ownership of the outlets and what development might look like. I'm going to go back one. So, as I said before, the Planning Commission did review this project at the November fifteenth meeting. They held their public, they held the public hearing, had three residents speak about some drainage concerns that are existing, so not anything that Hawthorne Ridge has created at this point, but something that might be exacerbated by the development. So, D.R. Horton has been working with those property owners to work through some of the issues. Something else that's really interesting about this property is the amount of trees that are there. So, we did not require a full tree, a full tree survey for this project. It would have taken days and days and days for them to go out and get every single tree that's on that property. So, thinking about the entire property area, which is one hundred and twenty-two acres, it's really amazing that the existing canopy currently covers ninety-six of those acres. So, thinking about that site, the preservation that we're gaining through this development, and then the removal or canopy coverage that will be removed is roughly ten acres, so about ten percent of the trees will be removed with this project.
That's really cool, by the way. I think that's awesome.
I was taking some notes for this meeting, and I was looking at the square footage of the trees on the property, which, the property area in total is about five million square feet, and the remaining tree coverage we'll maintain is three point seven five million square feet of trees.
Are there any, like heritage trees, like remnants of the big woods? Are we saving those?
Yes, there are several throughout the entire site. I'm not concerned with the condition of the trees that are going. So, an idea of what the homes will look like, D.R. Horton and the developer, developer's engineer is here tonight, if you want to ask some specific questions about the home types, but a good idea of what they might look like once they're developed.
Can I just ask a quick question here?
Sure.
Your development in Chaska, off of Counter Road, I believe, is it one forty? No, it's not one forty. The closed property in Chaska. Are these homes similar to what you, that what you have in that particular development?
Good evening, Deborah, way with your.
Oh, good evening, good evening, Deborah.
Yes, they are similar floor plans to what we're offering in Chaska.
Okay.
I'll stay up here in case.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Being that some of these homes are going to have really, really spectacular views, have, have you thought about having any truly custom lots where people can buy the lot and then just build?
We're, we're not a lot seller, developer and sell lots. We develop for the homes that we build, so, no, that wouldn't be an option from our business perspective.
Okay.
That'd be tough to make money. Any other questions? Sorry with this particular junction. You can stay up here, sorry.
No, I just had a question maybe for Aaron or Dan, but the way the lots are going to be situated, none of the houses will be in a position where they're too close to the bluff that you can't do a, a deck or anything in the back?
Correct. So, we identified that pretty early in the process, knowing some of the issues that have come to the city before in the bluffs development, that people have these spectacular homes with a sliding door, but they're not able to put a deck on because of the bluff requirement. So, we've worked with D.R. Horton to identify some of those lots, and it's been identified that, yes, there will be ample room to have decks on locations that we thought the bluff would be impacted on the lot.
And D.R. Horton will definitely make the buyers aware of where, like, the environmental setbacks are.
Correct.
I can just.
We've had lots of trouble with that.
Yeah, and we, we do, we did take into account, we do understand that our buyers do want decks, and so we do overcorrect the pads so that there can be decks on the houses. We will disclose to our buyers, and we actually will probably put on their surveys as well, the setbacks for the bluffs and kind of the no-build area on the lots.
That'd be great.
We can additionally add signage for the bluff impact zone as well.
You've already been good neighbors, so.
Pardon me?
Oh, you just want me to say that again?
I didn't hear what you said.
Said you've already been, you've already been good neighbors, meeting with people you're go, you're, you're, you've already been good neighbors.
We, we do feel it's important to work with the neighbors. We are coming into a ready-established community, and so, we will keep lines of communication open with the folks that we met with to talk about their concerns as we go through the development process and the, developing the grading plan and such, so.
Thank you. How about her?
So, again, the requests before you tonight are rezoning from agriculture to a straight R-two zoning district, so no planned residential development required, straight R-two, as well as the preliminary plat.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Now that Deborah's up here, we have them available, they patiently waited through Cindy Monroe, Cindy Monroe, Cindy Monroe.
Do you want us to ask you questions? Just to keep talking, or?
I'm here, I'm happy to talk, I'm happy to talk.
I don't want to ask any more questions, just to talk. There's been a lot of talk tonight, a lot.
I'm sensing, I'm sensing, well, she had to read those.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one dash twenty eighteen, rezoning property from agriculture to R-two.
Motion by council member Monroe.
I will second that.
Seconded by Hank, unless you guys want to fight about it.
You can have it.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, we're not done with you yet.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
This is the big one.
Make a motion to adopt resolution one eighty-one dash eighteen, approving the preliminary plat for Hawthorne Ridge.
Motion by council member Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by Mock. Any further discussion? Almost welcome aboard. I can't, normally, I get, I get all excited and I get to welcome people aboard, but I won't be around for the final plat, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Uh, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you again.
You got it. All right, we are now to the part of the evening that, we're almost done, Ma, Monroe.
I know.
I almost said Ma. Speak to me. Anything, communications?
Nope, just, it's great sitting up here with you guys and keep up the good work, don't disappoint us.
I'm going to have to put your picture on the wall, so when I look left, I still see your face.
And it's always been so wonderful to sit here and see this incredible group of intelligent people that helps us set policy. Thank you so much. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, that's what I do.
Baby, baby, it's cold outside. Johnson?
Um, we have a Planning Commission meeting on Thursday night, and it has been a pleasure serving with both of you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Oh, are we doing that?
I hope not.
Oh, blow it up.
I wanted to mention that the Soggy Bottom Golf Tournament fundraiser with Alliance is coming up in January. We obviously have a couple meetings before that, but I wanted to, to get it on everyone's radar, so it'll be Saturday, January twenty-sixth. The purpose of that fundraiser is that we give the money to families in medical crisis in Carver, and we did select our two, our two recipients, so we do have Les Peterson is one of them, and then Kim, I'm going to try not to do it this bad last name, Kim Wainant, so, she is dealing with cancer. So, we have two really great recipients that we'd like to help out, so please, if you want to donate or be a part of that event, please register beforehand, Saturday, January twenty-sixth. Oh, hold on. Sorry. Mike, Cindy, thank you so much for everything that you have done, and I apologize that I did not, did not finish with that.
Hank?
Thanks, you guys.
That was two pens, Jack. It kills her, too. I know.
Oh, we're so sorry.
Mick, sorry, Mickey, we're sorry.
What?
If we did anything to upset you, Mickey.
You should have come to every meeting. Hank?
Mike and Cindy, thank you. Thank you for everything, your wisdom, your expertise, your courage.
Looks.
Thank you.
Don't forget kindness and good looks.
Yes.
Kindness and good looks. Just, for as much of you have given to this community, the families have given just as much, because they, they put up with it, too, because they have to put up with this every Monday night.
Well, they have to go out in public with us, too.
They don't have to, but they do. They choose to. But you have both done an immense service to this community, and I really appreciate it, and I know many people in, in the city that also appreciate it, but probably won't tell you. But thank you anyway, it's been an honor and a pleasure working with both of you.
Thank you.
Dan? Smithx? Merrick? Sanz-Eiden? Skok? Pustalka? Harris? Nice, we'll call it a night. I just want to say thank you, you guys. You guys, I, I joke and I say some things about our staff. Said staff. Our, our partners being phenomenal, and you guys really are that good, and you guys have a huge future ahead of you, and these guys are going to be just fine up here, as long as you guys are around and keep doing what you do, so keep doing it. And I, promise me you'll invite me to Harris's retirement party. Is, so, Monroe, get over here.
That was kind of a long time, I know.
So, Greg, a motion to adjourn.
Cindy?
I'll make a.
Motion by council member Monroe, seconded by council member Hank. Was it you?
Sure.
Hank? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.